Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission Orders, our July 8, 2019, meeting. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, one God, and in this world, liberty and justice for all.
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the Commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Jamie Hine, who's an alternate on the Commission. Next to Jamie is Jeff Kohan, a Commission member. To my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons, also a Commission member. And to my immediate left is J.P. Benoit, who is our vice chairperson. At the lower table is Casey Hand, our town planner. And I'm Jim Saitter, the chairperson of this Commission. As Mr. Monarazzo is not here this evening, I would ask Mr. Hine if you would please sit in for Mr. Monarazzo for this meeting. Before I begin our first item on our agenda, I'd like to make a note, item number three, which is new business. It's a site plan retail manufacturing for M. Galarraga, New England cider 110, North Plains Industrial Road. That application, at the request of the applicant, will not be heard this evening, so I assume it will be heard next month. And that brings us to our first item on our agenda, which is item number one. It's a zoning text amendment by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Oh, I did a minute. Before I... Let me backtrack. Thank you very much, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Before we get into our items on the agenda, I'd like to take up our approval of our minutes of our meeting of June 10, 2019. Are any Commission members with any questions, additions, corrections to the minutes? If none, I'd entertain a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Monday, June 10, 2019, minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone's opposed, any abstentions? Minutes are approved. Now, we'll go to number one on our agenda, which is our public hearing. It's a continuation of a zoning text amendment for Planning and Zoning Commission's Sections 4.6D.10, 4.8C.11, 4.16C.1H, 4.22D.2, clarification or modification of these sections of the zoning regulations pertaining to electric vehicle charging stations. Again, this is a continuation of the public hearing. I think we had a fairly extensive discussion concerning this at our last meeting. One of the items, or one of the reasons why this was not taken up at our last meeting was because we did not have any comments back from the South Central Connecticut Regional Planning Commission, which we do at this time. But for the benefit of individuals that were not at our meeting last week, excuse me, last month, Mrs. Hand, if you could give a very brief summation of what this is about. Again, we did have a very full discussion on this last month.
Sure. So, very briefly, this was, this is a proposal that sort of came to our attention by way of an inquiry that we had for some electric charging stations. That application did not end up going forward, but it sort of brought to light the fact that our regulations hadn't been updated to sort of keep up with the newer technology of electric charging with, for electric cars. So, that was sort of the impetus for this, was to make sure that our regulations sort of clearly address how and in what circumstances those would be allowed. They've, so the proposal is to place those into the same category as gasoline service stations. So, while some of the impacts may be significantly different than the impacts of a gas station, such as maybe some environmental impacts, things like that, the land use is a similar type of category. It's you're pulling up your car, you're fueling, you're essentially providing energy to your car. And we expect that technology to continue to evolve and speed up. So, the Commission felt that it was appropriate to sort of put it together in that with gasoline fueling stations as special permits in the zones that those are permitted in. So, what that means is that the Commission considers them on a case-by-case basis. So, that way, we look at, make sure circulation is appropriately designed, traffic generation, things of that nature. So, moving forward, any car charging facilities would be a land use category that's permitted by special permit in the majority of our commercial zones, or in our sort of main commercial zones, CBRF40, industrial zones. And added to that, when I was looking at the category, it sort of, I was reminded that we also don't explicitly mention car washes detailing or oil change facilities, and we've always just sort of put them under that grouping. So, we also explicitly added that language as proposed. And we did receive a, they didn't have a quorum, but we did still receive a favorable recommendation from the RPC members that were present.
And Mr. Benoit, if you'd just note that for the record, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Legal notice application. You want to do all of it? Okay. We have a memo from Michael Calhoun to Casey Hand dated June 17, 2019.
That's it. That's it. We've already read the, we read the legal notice at the last month's meeting. All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Hand. Any Commission members with any further questions, comments on this amendment to our zoning regulations? Yes, Mr. Hine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I unfortunately was absent at the last meeting, but in reviewing the proposed change, I noticed that there's a reference to 4.6.10 as one of these sections to be revised. And I think that that's a mistake. I think it should be 4.6.19.
So, Mr. Hine did point that out to me before the meeting, and that is correct. So, in the motion, it should be 4.69, not 4.610.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hine.
And just for the record, Ms. Hand, you are comfortable that that does not affect the notice in this particular instance, correct?
Right. So, we've properly noticed the, what the proposed change to the regulation is, that the substance of it isn't impacted. So, anyone that would have an interest still has proper notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hine. Any other Commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief question. Casey, I was traveling last week for the holiday and noticed like electric charging station at a stop and shop. So, would this now be included in this?
Yes. So, we did talk about that. The stop and shop here has one of the, and like in the town that I live in, Big Y has one.
Sure.
Where it's sort of the, the not superchargers. It's the regular charger where while you're shopping in the grocery store, you can plug in your car, and it's typically, not always, but typically free. And it's sort of a convenience for the shopper rather than a separate land use. But rather than trying to sort of parse that out, we said everything will now be under this special permit category, and that way, the Commission can look at it on a case-by-case basis. I would think we would treat something like that with, because we talked about that a little bit when we had the Walmart application. So, I think we would, I think there's a somewhat of a difference, potential difference to impact between, like I said, where someone's shopping and it's a convenience provided that they can plug in their car versus it's the primary, it's its own primary use where someone is going there for the purpose of charging their car, just like you would go to a gas station to put gas in your car. So, but again, this way, the Commission can be presented with that information on a case-by-case situation. Not that we don't want to encourage these, because I think we do, but I think that way, we can look at them responsibly and potential impacts to, again, traffic and especially onsite circulation. I've noticed, I've been paying a lot of attention to them lately, too. And I've noticed that typically, they are, at least the ones I've seen, were more removed from the building or the shopping center when they are sort of the superchargers, because I think for those reasons.
Okay. Just one last follow-up. We've discussed it. I mean, I'm in favor of it, but I just, the question, would, under this reg change, could someone just apply just to do this? Or is it always considered an accessory use to your primary use? So, gas station with electric charging, oil change with electric charging, we wouldn't expect to see, or the regulation would allow just 100% electric charging operation?
No, I think they could. I think somebody could come in, just like, I want to do a gas station, or I just want to do, if, if, if electric vehicles became in high enough demand, you could do just a charging, charging facility.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. This is a public hearing. Are any members of the public like to comment on the application? If they would, please come forward and name an address. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission if anyone has any final comments, or Mrs. Hand, if you have any final comments. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application 902-19.
Second. Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Planning and Zoning Electric Vehicle Charging Stations zoning text amendment, application 902-19, to modify Section 4.6.19, 4.8.C.11, 4.16.C.1H, 4.22.D.2, as proposed, to clarify the allowance of charging stations for electric vehicles as a primary use by special permit, and to clarify the application of this category for car washes detailing, oil change facilities, and other similar uses by clarifying, modifying the current use category of gasoline service stations, because it clarifies usage of the charging station and also clarification of categories of gasoline service stations, subject to an effective date July 29, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Benoit. Do we have a second on the, on the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Hine, please.
Yes, to approve.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, the application's been approved. Moving on, item number two on our agenda is a zoning text amendment by the Planning and Zoning Commission for modification for Section 6.9 to 1, oh, rather, 6.921, define and prohibit digital signs, also known as electronic signs, electronic message boards, LED signs, et cetera, except for a limited allowance for gas stations. Correct language in reference to temporary signs and correct and incorrect section reference. And Mr. Benoit, if you would please read the legal notice and then note all correspondences for the record.
Yes. Legal notice, application 903-19, zoning text amendment to modify Section 6.9 to 1, define and prohibit digital signs, AKA electric signs, electric message boards, LED signs, et cetera, except for a limited allowance for gas stations. Two, correct language in reference to temporary signs. Three, correct and incorrect section reference. Correspondence is as follows. A memo from Michael Calhoun to Casey Hand dated June 17, 2019. A planning and zoning interdepartment referral notice of proposed development by the Fire Marshal dated June 13, 2019. We have the zoning amendments for 903-19, digital signs, et cetera, with modifications, June 25, 2019. We have a memo from Michael Calhoun to Casey Hand dated June 17, 2019. I'm sorry, from South Central Regional Planning Commission. That is Michael Calhoun, who is the chairman. We have an excerpt from local regulations of dynamic displays. We have an excerpt from the Town of Southington zoning regulations. We have a memo from Wainford Senior Center, Bill Viola, Executive Director, to Casey Castello, dated April 13, 2018. We have meeting discussion minutes from workshop dated April 24, 2017. We have a memo from Robert Seal to the Connecticut Planning Commission, Casey Castello, dated May 30, 2018. We have a article looking ahead, regulating digital signs and billboards. We have the Wainford Planning and Zoning Commission minutes dated Tuesday, May 30, 2017. And we have special meeting minutes dated Monday, March 15, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Benoit. And Mrs. Hand, now, if you would please
Sure.
present on this particular application.
Sure. So, as you are all aware, this issue was raised because of some concerns about some digital signs that had been permitted in town, and some of the issues that they were creating with regard to distraction and light trespass, and some light pollution and things of that nature, and some complaints we had gotten. And the, the way our regulation was, existed before the moratorium was that the regulations prohibit flashing, blinking, scrolling, any, anything of that nature, but don't prohibit digital signs. So, theoretically, you could have a digital sign as long as it was static, and that was how they were getting permitted. The other part of that is that I do pay attention to the permitted digital signs in town. I don't think a single one of them complies with that restriction. Or very, I shouldn't say not a single one. There may be one that does, but very few of them do. They, they, it's, I think it's, that's a secondary issue. But, so there were some concerns raised. So, we decided to have a moratorium on digital signs so that the Commission would have an opportunity to talk about how to handle them. And we had a couple of different workshops spanning over quite a long time. So, we, and we ended up extending the moratorium a couple of times, partly to have some of the discussion, partly I was out for a little while, so that sort of delayed things further. And ultimately, as a result of those 2017 workshops and discussions, I had drafted a potential regulation that was going to allow a limited amount of, of digital signage. And that was based on a lot of information that had been provided to us from several different sources that you received over the time of that, over the course of the workshops and everything. I think after seeing the, the proposed regulation, the committee sort of thinking about it a little bit, and how it would be applied, and some of the potential challenges with it, at the last workshop, which was the one in May, was it May? I think it was May.
March.
Yeah, March. Hold on. That sounds more correct. Well, earlier this year, the Commission, the general consensus was that the Commission was more comfortable, hold on one second. The general consensus was the, was that, yeah, May, oh, no, that was May of 2017. I'm sorry. Yeah, March of 2019. Sorry. So, the general consensus was that the Commission was actually more comfortable with prohibiting the digital signs outright. I think there were a lot of concerns about safety and distraction and enforceability of the limitations, and really, there was some public participation, and kind of some issues were raised about kind of where are the limits and the evolution of the technology that's, that's rather rapid. So, the, the consensus at that point was that we would proceed with generally prohibiting the digital signs. The one exception that I have proposed, and I did talk to our law department about this at length, is a limited amount of signage for gasoline service stations, and it would apply to the electric charging stations as well, under that same category, because there is a certain volatility to those prices that isn't applicable to most other products, and they are sort of a single product focus, or a single product facility. And people need to be able to sort of quickly ascertain kind of which gas station they want to go to. So, for safety reasons, it's also easier if that information is easily provided to people. So, what we can't do is regulate what the signs actually say. So, we can't say those have to be pricing signs. What we can say is that gas stations can have a limited amount of signage. The way I've designed the regulation is that it would be geared, designed to be pricing signs, or geared towards pricing signs. So, the proposal is for two signs to a certain square footage, which was based on what some other towns, based on the regulation that Mr. Kohan provided from Southington, and what some other towns do. So, it's, it would be proposed to allow a maximum, the two signs not to exceed 10 inches in height and 25 inches in width. So, in theory, those could say anything. So, you should be aware of that. But that is the one exception that's, that's been proposed. And also because of the safety of having to go out and physically change the, the pricing signs versus being able to digitally, digitally change them. The other thing you should be aware of is, I did look into it with the state. State law does not require gas stations to post the big pricing signs. They only require the pump topping, pump topper pricing. But I think for the purposes of providing that information to the public, pretty much all gas stations do that, and there is sort of an expectation that they will. There is a requirement that if one price is posted, one, you have to post, for example, both the cash price and the credit price for a particular type of gasoline or fuel. So, that was the one exception that was proposed. The other things that are included in this regulation, so Section C, sorry to jump around a little, but that Section C signs requiring a registration. If you remember, about 10 years ago, we adopted a regulation allowing for temporary signs on a limited basis. This sort of brought up an interesting issue, but unintentionally, I think those are listed as advertising signs. Our definition of advertising sign is an off-site advertising sign, so, which is the opposite of what the intention of that regulation was. So, I think, Attorney Small and I have talked about this at length as well, and I think it raises sort of a bigger issue in terms of, I think we need to revisit how we define advertising sign and what that actually means. So, you can expect that that will be coming back to in the near future. But our business signs are on-premise advertising signs, and that was really the intention of this temporary sign regulation. So, this proposal, that language change is just to address that. It's not related to digital signs. It's a fix in that section of the regulation. And that is pretty much, oh, the one other thing I should mention is, oh, no, two other things I should mention. One, there was in the original submittal that you got, there was a reference to a proposal to no longer regulate signs that are not visible from adjacent property or from the public way. In speaking with Attorney Small, we both felt that it was maybe a little soon to do that, and that the Commission probably would want to have a little more discussion about that, because I think we need to hash it out a little more in terms of the extent of that allowance. So, I've had some issues come up with things like menu boards for drive-throughs, scoreboards for sports teams. So, kind of a variety of things. So, I think maybe we need to parse out a little bit what the situations where that would be applicable are. Is there still a maximum amount of signage we want to talk about? Do we want to talk about lighting restrictions? Because there are still potential concerns about overall crazy light pollution that might impact other properties, things like that. So, that part, we, I took out for now, and I'll come back with that in the future. And then the last thing, sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit. The last thing was in regard to the digital, to circle back to the digital signage, the proposal for the gas station permitted signage, digital signage, does have requirements in terms of maximum, or restrictions in terms of maximum intensity, the coloring, and that it can't like flash or blink or any of that. There is also a proposed definition of digital sign, and so in your attachment to be, that shows in the red, the original proposal, and then the few modifications that were made in this update. And that also, back to the advertising sign and business sign discussion, that I did make some, we did make some proposed clarifications in both of those definitions for now. But again, I think we'll revisit that further in the future.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Hand. Commission members with questions, comments on the proposed zoning regulation amendment. Mr. Kohan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few questions, but I'm gonna start out with a comment first, because I've, I've been one of the outspoken persons on that one offending sign on the other side of town that, you know, is very bright and, you know, flashing. And, you know, the more I, I think about this, just restricting digital signs in basically their entirety, I don't know if I'm, you know, ready to support that entire ban, after really thinking about it a little carefully, because, you know, this is kind of the wave of, you know, the future, I guess. And we don't want to, you know, diminish advertising for any, you know, businesses that want to employ these. And this is where my questions come up, because I was getting an ice cream the other day, and, you know, the, the ice cream store had a, basically what I would call a neon sign. But, you know, I've seen digital forms of this, where it just says open and close, and it just flashes open. And, you know, I'm thinking, if we, you know, pass this, does that sign get, you know, it's already there, so it's grandfathered in, but, you know, can a new business have that type of sign? So, I was a little confused on.
Sure.
And so, that's my first question.
Okay. So, two parts to that answer. One is, you will see that in the, we have a list of signage that is prohibited currently, and it, we, currently it says any flashing sign, so that's F2, any flashing sign or device with flashing or intermittent lights of changing degrees of intensity. So, those are prohibited. And then I did add, because in some of my research, I came across this, and I was like, we haven't really clarified this, neon illumination or other similar exposed unshielded illumination. Now, so, generally speaking, no, just like we wouldn't allow digital signs. But, and it's kind of a big one, anything inside of a window inside the building is not regulated. So, that's currently true, and that would stay true. So, all those like little open signs that are inside the window, and then when we tell people that when they ask. So, as long as they put it inside the window instead of outside the window, it's permitted.
I think that, you know, again, I know we're not going to take a motion on this tonight. And we did get a late email, I don't know if anybody on the commission saw, from a gentleman who was here at the last meeting, Tim Kehoe, who can't be here.
He's here.
Oh, okay. I read that quickly and I just want to make sure that, you know, is part of the record for.
It's not part of the record.
Well.
It actually can't be considered in your conversation tonight because it wasn't.
Tonight, right.
Yeah. So if Mr. Kehoe was able to make it, fortunately, so it's less of a point, but technically it could be considered ex parte. So what we can discuss is, you know, whatever input is given on the record tonight and then as long as if somebody forwards it to me and I can formally put it in the record for next month, then we can get it into the record.
Right. That's all I'm asking. So, so again, I, I'm just rethinking the overall ban and, you know, would really, if I had my drill, there's really focus on the intensity, the brightness, you know, the amount of flashing.
So we did have a, I did write a regulation to that effect that we could revisit if that's the general consensus. Two things. One, same as with the other regulation change, we are still waiting for RPC input, so I was going to recommend continuation to next month anyhow. The second part of that is, I sort of thought this was the direction we were going, but so if not, the moratorium expires next month. So we would probably need to simultaneously, which we can do, that's fine, but simultaneously extend out the moratorium a little bit further, if that's the general appetite.
Thank you. You know, again, this is where, you know, after a little thought about this, you know, reading the info this month, where I've just had a few questions, so that's, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other commission members? Mr. Hine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess one of the questions I had was the proposal or the revised reg makes reference, we're taking out advertising and we're putting in business sign, correct? Is that, I mean?
Well, so we already have a definition for advertising sign and a definition for business sign. That's in your reg now. The proposal does correct them a little bit. For example, we use the term commodity currently, which is not really a commonly used term anymore, so we sort of upgraded it to say product, good, things like that. But the distinction currently between an advertising sign and a business sign in the zoning regs is that an advertising sign advertises off-site products and a business sign advertises onsite products. And it's sort of, I think there's a better way we can do that and I'm going to work on that moving forward, but that's the way it is now. The temporary sign provision where people can have those temporary signs, like you stick in the ground, people can register to have them for two weeks at a time if they're having like a sale or something like that special, they want a little more. And that was done years ago because we didn't allow temporary signs at all. And the business community was concerned that they didn't have an opportunity to do a little bit of, get a little bit of extra attention sometimes if there was like a special event or sale or thing like that. So just when I was reviewing the regulation, I just happened to come across the fact that the way we, the regulation was written at the time was as a temporary advertising sign, which would mean an off-site sign, which was the opposite of the intention of the regulation. So it's really, should just be a fix in terms of that language.
Okay. Yeah, and I appreciate that explanation. In reviewing those temporary business sign sections, you know, and I guess this really is not before us tonight, but some of the sections were somewhat redundant, I thought. And I thought there was a, there's a better way to maybe order some of these sections in that 6.9 subsection C.
Okay.
But the only change it sounds like we're making is from advertising to business, to make it, to clarify that issue, right?
Yeah. So I mean, to that point, what I think, and again, Attorney Small and I talk about signs a lot. So I think one thing moving forward because of some, there was a federal Supreme Court decision a couple of years ago known as Reed, and there was a Connecticut Supreme Court decision about two years ago, I think Reed was three or four years ago, about what can be regulated and how it can be regulated. And so what I anticipate is that in the near future, we'll probably end up doing another close to total overhaul of the section, of the signage section. So we could easily kind of visit something like that at that time. If you had some.
Okay. Yeah. And I appreciate that. Turning now to the gas station exception, for lack of a better term, there's a reference to two digital sign displays. What does that, what do you envision those two digital sign displays being? Are those displays that are put down on the ground somewhere? Are they the displays over the pumps? Are they the displays on a sign, you know, a large sign in front of the gas station? I mean?
What would be allowed, what's allowed is one, there's one ground sign permitted per property. So if you wanted to make those displays part of your ground sign, they would have to both be a part of that larger ground sign or just that be your ground sign. If for some reason you wanted to put it on the building instead, it would be part of your total signage, part of your wall signage. I mean, what I sort of envision is that the majority of gas stations will choose to use that, if not all of them, will choose to use it as you put one price. Because like I said, if they have to advertise, if they advertise the cash price, they also have to advertise the credit price of a particular type of fuel. So that's what I anticipate someone would use it for.
Right. So, and I agree with you. I mean, that makes sense. Many gas stations, however, have different types of gas. They have unleaded, medium grade, you know, diesel. I mean, wouldn't they need, and if they have to advertise both the cash and the credit price, wouldn't they need more than just two signs to advertise those prices?
So I've been paying attention to gas station prices a lot. And this is also why I talked to the state to understand it a little bit better. That's sort of a choice. I mean, we could allow six of these things. I just think that's going overboard. I think if we're not generally permitting those and we're making an allowance because of the volatility of gas, having the two is probably enough to give people a sense of what they need. And I actually originally thought we would need more, but I've been, like I said, sort of paying attention and I've seen a lot of gas stations that just advertise the cash and credit price for regular gas. So that seems to meet the need without, I think, going overboard. But that's something that obviously the commission could talk about further. I think we have some representatives from at least one gas station here, so you may hear from them about their opinion about it.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. I sort of, I could be convinced otherwise, but I kind of think that you need signs for each type of fuel. The other question I had is grandfathering. So you, you know, you have a bunch of these signs already out there. The technology is changing, it's going to change over the years. How do we intend on policing these signs in the future? Is it that, you know, once you have a sign, now you have a sign and you can, you know, as the technology changes, you can change your sign? Or is it that you're going to be limited to whatever sign you have there and whatever technology it is, you're limited to that? And if the technology improves, you're stuck. You can't do anything. I mean, that's a concern that I have because, you know, we're going to tell these people, you know, these businesses that they're grandfathered in, but do we really know what we're telling them when we say that?
There was a case, a sign case years ago that involved, in Wallingford, a court case, where essentially the determination was made that a sign, even if removed, can be replaced in kind. So essentially you can claim, as long as it was legally there to begin with, legitimately there to begin with. So I think the same would carry for digital signs. So every legitimate digital sign in town has a sign permit. So we have a record of every legitimate digital sign in town. And that's, I mean, sign permits, when somebody, Mr. Kehoe can tell you this, when somebody comes in for a new sign permit, we dig it out and we have to figure out the whole history of what's supposed to be there and what's actually there and do they true up or not? So I think with digital signs, it would be the same thing if they were prohibited where a digital, if you had a digital sign, you could, I would say you could replace it with a digital sign, even if the digital technology were different, you know, were evolved technology as under our definition of digital. So if some other technology comes out that is a whole other, which I'm sure it will, so for example, our one thing, the digital signs do not include, as defined, do not include the video board signs. So I would not say you could, for example, put in a video board to replace an approved digital sign, because that's a different technology.
Okay. Yeah. No, but what about size? What if somebody has a digital?
You can't go bigger.
It's got to be the exact same size.
You can always go smaller.
I don't think I have any further questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hine. Other commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I just want to say on the record, I think Mrs. Hand has done a tremendous job with the commission trying to keep us on point on this particular topic. And the record that you produced this evening reminds me that we've been discussing this for not months but years. So I'm excited that we're at this point, you know, and I would share with you, I was talking, you know, to Mr. Cohen, I think there is definitely a need to move forward. Okay? So I would, I'm prepared, you know, again, this would be on the record, I support the decision, excuse me, I support the change the commission is proposing at this point. I know we can't act on it tonight, we're waiting for regional planning, you know, and Commissioner Cohen raised some excellent point. On the digital sign, we all are trying to regulate because we, I think there's consensus among the commission that there is, you know, one large offender, that, you know, the sign would be considered, you know, just what we don't want. But, you know, and I know the term grandfathering comes in, it's, you know, it is what it is. We're not going to be able to get rid of that. But I am generally in favor of the changes that are proposed. I am certainly understand that we won't be voting in this till August, but I do think that we have spent not months, years discussing the idea of, you know, signage. I remember when I got on commission a few years ago, that the sign section of our zoning regs is the longest section of the book. So this is tremendous that we're this far along, you know, and we're only looking at roughly a two-page regulation change. I think the digital signs is definitely something that, you know, if Commissioner Cohen wants to propose something different, we've discussed it, I'm fine to revisit that issue. I think it's very fair that we move forward because the moratorium has been extended a number of times and I do think that we should take some action. But I'm certainly open for further discussion if necessary, but I certainly wouldn't hope it would be a couple of years. I do think Mrs. Hand did a nice job of explaining the corrections we're making to the incorrect section reference, as well as references to the temporary signs. I think part of it is just looking at the materials in advance of this. I think this is pending decision from the regional planning. We should move forward in August and I'd be very happy if there's consensus in the commission to revisit digital signs, but I think it's a right move at this point to move forward. And I know that I'm on the record as saying this once before, you know, looking at the zoning complaint log, a shout out to the office Mrs. Hand manages, the zoning complaint log used to be filled with sign violations. It's down to eight this month. So it's a constant work, it's a constant battle. So anything we can do to improve the regulations so people know, you know, kind of what's allowed, what's not allowed, I'm generally in favor of that. So I'm in favor of this change as proposed and certainly thank Mrs. Hand and her staff for keeping us on point.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members? Mr. Benoit.
I actually would also like to thank Ms. Hand for putting this together and getting us on task, you know, going through all the information and the time that it's taken. And just even looking at correspondence from 2017, 2018, you know, I'm also in favor of us really moving forward in August because I think we've done a lot of discussion on this and, you know, I think it's really time for us to kind of move forward on this regulation change.
Thank you, Mr. Benoit. And I guess I would just add my comments, certainly I believe Mr. Fitzsimmons as well as Mr. Benoit pretty much summed up my, you know, my feeling on this. It was mentioned, we spent, I think, quite a bit of time on this. Certainly our town planner, you know, has presented us with various options over the course of our workshops. And I think we had a very, you know, very thorough discussion at our last workshop. You know, I appreciate if other commission members are raising other questions, certainly that's what we're, you know, we're here for. We all need to make up our, come to our own conclusions, what we think is appropriate. But I certainly would be in favor in, you know, moving forward with this application at our next meeting. I think as our town planner has pointed out, as well as Mr. Fitzsimmons, you know, the sign violations have been one of the, one of the larger areas that our zoning enforcement officer deals with. And I'm looking at the, you know, with the digital signs, certainly we have, you know, technology today. I'm sure that technology is going to change and somehow I think we'd always be looking to try to catch up with our regulations perhaps. And I think also just as far as to looking at the technology to be able to monitor the signs to make sure that they're in, you know, compliance with whatever kind of restrictions that we want to put on these types of signs. Again, I think we're just going to be, you know, just chasing, chasing the proverbial rabbit down the rabbit hole. That's, that's my feeling on it. But with that, if there's no other commission members that would like to comment, and Mrs. Hand, if you have no further comments, I'll go out to the public.
I just wanted to say two things quickly. Yeah, if this does go forward as is or in a near inner iteration of it, we can always, of course, pick back up adding something in to allow, you know, if the consensus at some point in the future is let's revisit this or let's add something back in, I think that obviously that option is always on the table. And the other thing I just, I meant to mention during my comments and I didn't, is I did do, I did look a lot at two things. Well, one is kind of the, as I mentioned, the do, I did look a lot at two things, well, one is kind of the, as I mentioned, the, and I don't, I'm not a believer that we should write a regulation around enforcement challenges, because to some degree they are separate issues. But with the digital signs, they do seem to present a, an ongoing challenge. The ones that exist in town seem to be kind of a constant enforcement issue. And the other part of, sort of, the other part of that is I did reach out to a lot of other municipalities and do a lot of research to try to find out what other municipalities do, and if other municipalities in Connecticut had similar regulations. There are some, but a lot of municipalities seem to do what we currently have, which is the idea, pre-moratorium, which is the idea that you can have signs, but they can't flash, they don't speak to the other part of it. And I was actually surprised by the number of towns that do prohibit them or very strongly limit them. So either don't allow them or limit kind of to the time temperature and gas station kind of allowances. So I just wanted to add those two comments.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Hand. This is a public hearing. We encourage members of the public to speak on an application. Any members of the public who'd like to speak, please state your name, address, and your comments. Yes, the gentleman here, please.
I'm Tim Keo, 1000 Ridge Road in Wallingford. I apologize for breaking any parliamentary procedures I might have done. I really didn't think I was gonna be here, I had a wake here in town and then a wake in Trumbull. My wife said I can go tomorrow before the funeral and say goodbye to the person in Trumbull, so that's why I'm here. You know, I came to almost try and beg you not to make these things illegal because of this one person, and, or this one sign, we won't call it a person, this one sign. And I want to go back because it goes before your time, that sign was actually much larger on day one, put up without a permit. It got flagged by zoning, came back, then they pulled the permit for the other one. And again, ahead of the time, ahead of the time that the town was ready to regulate that type of stuff. There's two things we have to worry about with these signs, and that's animation, that's your flashing and your transitions and your, just no animation, and automatic dimming. And everything else will go away, so you say, well, how do you regulate that? There are, there's two towns I'm aware of in, actually, Milford does a pretty good job of regulating it also. But there are fines. You know, in my email, I said, the brand-new Mustang, the state speed limit is 65 miles an hour. Brand-new Mustang can go 130. You're not gonna stop anyone from driving it because they're gonna go over the speed limit, you're gonna give them a ticket. And it should be the same with these signs. If they don't do, you give them a ticket if they're, you know, if they go over and beyond the regulations. So they could be a big help. I agree with the gas stations, and I have a lot of verbiage for that. So I was waiting for workshops, I was actually upset with her, went in today to say to her, wait a minute, you're having this vote, you told me you were gonna have workshops. I had people ready, I had Daktronics, I had Watchfire, I had sold all these American LED companies, I was gonna set them up one night, try and set it up so that you could see what that brightness is, because we went over and measured it, next to a regulated one, different sizes, how you could see the different sizes and just... This sign, I was telling Tim, the least amount of money I make, I own a sign and graphic company also, so to be fair, but I don't make a lot of money on these things, but what I'm telling you is, micro businesses, not small businesses, those businesses with 50 or less employees, it's an affordable way for them to get their message out there or get their, they don't have the stop-and-shop money or, you know, that type of stuff. So when we did the, and again, I think it was before Casey's time, when we did the temporary, when we got rid of banners, the commission at that time made a motion, okay, I vote that we're gonna get rid of these temporary banners. Okay, well, I'd like to amend the motion. How do you want to amend it? You know those little tent frames, A-frames? Yeah. I don't like those either. Okay, no discussion about it, no, and again, the most affordable way for a small business to get their business out there is an A-frame. Now, I understand if they're a mess and it's tough for you to get out there and say, that's not professionally made. But there are ways to, Bridgeport makes me register. Every year, I go to Bridgeport, it's a $300 fee, whether I do a job in Bridgeport or not. But if I install a sign and there's something wrong with it, they don't call the owner, they're calling me. I'm the, and, you know, there's something like that that we could do in town here to regulate that stuff, and people will be more responsible. As far as, I tried to get one here tonight, I didn't know about this meeting till this morning, but I tried to get a measure, just so I could show you how we can measure ambient light and how easy it is to see if there's, you know, if a sign is within regulation or not. I couldn't do that. So, you know, whatever you decide, I apologize, I didn't know about the workshops, as I said, I did a lot of homework to try and help Casey and Amy go through this process. I'm not selling, I think there's only eight in town, maybe nine in town. But I know there's that one, and it hurts, you know, it hurts a lot of our businesses because, you know, because he's done that. So what I'm begging you to do is do the regulation, there are towns, there are plenty of towns who have abatement times. Here's the new regulation, yeah, you took out that sign? But here's the new regulation, and you have six months to abate this, and to come into, you know, that type of thing. So I don't know if it's, no? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking to me. That's all I got to say. Thank you for listening to me. I'm sorry if I caused any disruption.
Not a problem. Thank you very much, sir. Other members of the public?
How you doing? Anthony Bauer, 477 North Colony Road in Wallingford. I'm actually representing Gallo Brothers. It was, it's a family-owned business, my grandfather's father started it probably well over 50 years ago. We're just in the process of redoing the whole station, you know, trying to update the times and everything. We've actually sat down with Casey, she's been very helpful before. I've never really gotten involved with anything political, so a little nervous here, but as far as our business, my mother is pretty much the sole employee of the company. I chose to do something else so I could, you know, retire and have a pension and not have to work a million years like she does. But as far as like the sign, I know Casey touched on it with the safety wise, I don't know if anybody's ever gone to a gas station and actually seen the way you have to change the prices right now, but it's, it's like a piece of Plexiglas with a number on it, with this lovely, very cheap suction cup on a pipe. And in the middle of winter, that thing comes off, and when it's, I don't know, 20 feet in the air, it's come down, it's almost hit her in the face numerous times, never mind that, she's been hit in the parking lot for customers flying through there. So going with these digital signs, you know, nothing fancy, not flashing like the one that you guys were talking about, we all know who it is. It would really benefit our business, it would benefit my mother's health, it would benefit our property, and I think it would benefit the town of Wallingford, because if we can get some type of formality here, where all these signs start to look the same, you know, you drive up and down Route 5, it's very commercialized, there's a lot of big bright signs, some flash, some don't, so there already are a lot of distractions. So I think if you guys go forward with this and allow gas stations to do this, I think it would be, you know, a great asset to not only my family business, but also other companies in town. I know there's another gas station in town that's on hold right now with their sign, I was hoping that that gentleman was gonna be able to show up, show some support. Mr. Keo, who actually used to be my baseball coach, I'm glad that he spoke, I think that was awesome. And as far as you, Mr. Hind, the gas station prices. So the best way I can word it is, the less numbers that are there, the easier for the public to understand. So we would post our regular cash price and our regular credit price. I think you start getting too many numbers up there, and the public's gonna be like, what is going on? And they're just, everybody's in a hurry, they're just gonna drive right by and go to the next one that doesn't have it. So the easiest way to do it is to advertise actually the cheapest price. Sometimes you'll get those people in there that really don't want the cheap price and they want that super, or they want diesel, they see that there's diesel there and most gas stations have super, so that's, that's just where that comes from. So I appreciate you guys' time, and I really hope that, you know, come next month, we can get this going, because we're on hold with the sign, and it takes 16 weeks to make the sign, so thank you.
Good enough. Thank you very much. Other members of the public? Yes, the gentleman in the back. No, excuse me, sir, you've, Mr. Letourneau. Well, after Mr. Letourneau speaks, you're certainly, if there's no other members that would like to speak, then we'll have you come up.
John Letourneau, three region court. Interesting listening to a few comments tonight, and I think with the gas station signs, I see merit to it, but I also see a danger to it, because it depends on the brightness of the sign. And is it going to be just digital numbers, or is there gonna be a, you know, can there be a background display? And that's one of the things with LED lighting that can be done unlimited, is backgrounds or any kind of verbiage, or, and it can be changed. It can be all done on a computer, it can be changed. I think, and I do sympathize with the gas station owners, that in the wintertime, trying to go out and change prices and today is challenging at best, especially when the technology is there where they can do electronically. But my concern is the brightness. So maybe a way to do this would be, when they go for a permit for that sign, that there's a brightness level, which would be the lumens. And that's something that maybe Mr. Keo could help with, with a demonstration, maybe at another meeting, or another workshop, or however you want to do it, so you could understand the brightness. And that can be controlled, but it should be done at time of permit, not after the fact. And so that's, that's one way to do it. As far as general signage goes for businesses, you know, the whole premise of zoning is, it's what we want Wallingford to look like. You guys passed regulations on sizes of buildings, on setbacks, how much green area, I can go on and on and on. What do we want Wallingford to look like? We have signage, signage has been around since the beginning of time, but it's usually lit, overlit, and because of the new technology, we're here tonight to talk about digital signs. And, you know, it's a scary thing, because you could very easily turn into Las Vegas real quick, if there's not a regulation. And because it just take Route 5, forget about the downtown, just take Route 5, the amount of businesses that are on Route 5, where do you stop? All of a sudden, the car dealerships with the big signs that are lit from the inside are now gonna have digital, that they could change, that it could be changed. So, you know, it's, you open a door, you open a door, and I don't think it's ready yet. I spoke last time, the technology is changing, and it's not done yet by any means. I've seen, I'm in the lighting industry, active in the lighting industry, and I've seen it just in the past 10 years, how much it's changed. And I'm sure Mr. Keo has too with the, with the sign industry. I mean, they went from hand-painted signs to, I don't think there's a hand-painted sign painter out there anymore. But it's not that I'm against the technology, it's how we're going to deal with it. And there's just so much, there's enforcement questions of how to deal with it. Where do you limit it? How do you limit it? So it's, I don't think this is quite done yet. It's, I think you got a little ways to go, and I think there's, there needs to be an understanding, there needs to be maybe a sign company or representative come in and actually show you what a digital sign and how it can be dimmed. You know, and I like Casey's comment that, you know, you can go with the regulation as presented, and then you can come back at it, but be prepared, be prepared, because it's a changing industry. So I think I put another layer of confusion on this. It's, it's interesting, to say the least, it's very interesting, because it's evolving. When I was here last time, I said, I told you about a product that's out there that's really, it's about as thick as this, this right here. And you could, you could take it and roll it, you can bend it, you can do whatever, and it's LED. And you can make it as big as this room. You could cover the whole front of the auditorium, you could cover the back, it comes in sheets, you could do all kinds of stuff. Let that be out there. Then where do you go? You have a sign of, you know, side of a building that's lit up, or whatever. So it's just something to be wary of, and I think the way you're doing it with, you know, through caution is good, but there's still a lot more education that needs to be done. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before I go back to Mr. Keo, any other members of the public would like to talk on the, speak on the application? Yes, this gentleman.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Mike Salone, I'm with Standard Petroleum Company out of Bridgeport, Connecticut. I am Gallo Brothers gasoline supplier. We are in the process, and I believe that you've seen the work that she has been doing at the gas station. Tanks have been changed, new pumps have been put in, and we're on hold. We're on hold with the oil company that we're trying to do business with because of the LED sign. It's a 10 to 12-week process to order the sign, which we cannot go forward with. I do have a picture of the sign, if I could bring it to the board to show the brightness and what it looks like.
If you have something you'd like to present? Well, I think if you're gonna give it to us, we're gonna, you're gonna need to print that out for us.
Yeah, okay. So he can show it to you, and then I'll have him email it to you, so it's in the record.
Sure.
So again, I would say thank you, and if this process, and speaking with Casey, if this process is approved, it would certainly be helpful to our business. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I guess, Mr. Keo, you had another comment you'd like to make?
Yeah, well, it was a more of a question. I'm sorry. Tim Keo, 1000 Ridge. I guess my question was, because I sent that note out before, should I discuss some of, I mean, should I discuss?
If you want to, then you certainly can. We will, somebody will forward it to me, so that way it'll get into the record for next month, because we're not closing it or taking action tonight anyhow. But if you wanna talk about it tonight, there's no, certainly no harm in, I mean, I would encourage you to do that.
No, I was just going back to what you said before, I'm a little tense sometimes, it takes a while to get all the way in, so I'll sink all the way in.
Yeah, yeah, no, I would encourage you to do that, or if you wanna read part of it or anything like that now, you can certainly do that.
No, and I do, just maybe as an aside, I'm, petroleum...
Or if you want to forward it to me, same thing.
Yeah, petroleum is now, petroleum signs are now becoming the industry standard on that stuff, and they are almost all self-regulated as far as sizes of digits and what they can change and that type of stuff, brightness and stuff like that, if you, I'll try and send you as much stuff as I have, that's all.
Good enough. Thank you very much. Any other members of the public would like to speak? Seeing none, I guess I'll ring it back to the commission if there's any final comments any commission members would make before we continue this. As I said, we're going to continue this to our August meeting. Mrs. Hand, any final comments that you would like to make?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I wanted to, I really appreciated the public commentary tonight, and I wanted to thank Mr. Keo, and because I, he is, has always been great to work with, and is always a great resource for me. And some of the information that was provided to for the workshops were things that he had provided to me as part of this discussion. So he's always been a really valuable resource, and I wanted to sort of apologize if you weren't, if you didn't receive the agendas about the workshops or anything like that, because, yeah, so that was certainly not intentional, so we're sort of regardless, I just, I just wanted to say that. And then I also wanted to, to answer, to address Mr. Letourneau's comments, in terms of the gas, the gas station permitted signs, there is a maximum, what's called NIT, nit intensity, both for the daytime hours of 5,000 nits, and then as proposed, and 3,000 nits at night. And then there is a restriction that you could only have a background... So I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand, for that clarification. There's no other comments from any of the commission members, I'd entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to our August meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for application 903-19 until next month.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Moving on. Item number four, which is new business, it's a site plan, Reno Properties, 718 North Colony Road, formerly the Islet Building. And again, Mr. Rennoy, if you'd please note all correspondence for the record.
We have an application 219-19, site plan Reno Properties, 718 North Colony Road, former Islet Building. We have a inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger to, who is the senior engineer of Wallingford Water and Sewer Division, to Casey Hand, town planner, dated July 5, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Rennoy. And again, if the applicant and/or his representative would, when they're ready, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
I am, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Bernard Pellegrino, I'm an attorney with the Pellegrino Law Firm, and I represent the owner and applicant in regard to this application. And with me is Dan Garofalo, Dan is a representative of the property ownership. He is here in case there's any questions that you might have that I can't answer, so Dan is, is available. We are here to talk about the site, 718 North Colony Road, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. It's a 35 acre site, it's located in your RF40s zone, it kind of borders, it's the former Islet Building, I'm sure many of you know it as that site. It borders North Colony, North Main, Beaumont, and other land owned by the town. I have a site plan, which is colored for you that I'll refer to, it's not, I don't think yet part of the record, but I'm happy to leave it for discussion purposes. As you can see, the southerly and easterly.
It would be beneficial, we have an easel up there, if you could put that on the easel. So also, any members of public that are watching this on television, and there is also a microphone that you can use on this lower, lower table to my right.
So the map north is to the right and south is to the left, so you can see that the green areas which have been identified on the map, fairly wooded, both to the south and to the east. And there's some terrain changes, some topographical changes, so the site slopes down from, from those wooded areas. So on North Main, you really can't see the site because it drops down, the building is below, there's, you know, obviously the existing vegetation screens out the building, the site is lower in that area, same thing is true from the view from the south. Site is more visible on the Beaumont and the northerly portion of the, of North Colony. The site has been developed for.
Sure. I think we all have a good appreciation for this site. I guess if you could please just focus on what the application is, I believe it's for expanding a driveway, is that correct?
The, the application before you, which was submitted for administrative approval, was to, to make some minor site plan modifications to the driveway that goes around the easterly side, back of the building, if you will, and install three loading docks for existing tenants in that area.
Sure, if you would please just point that out to us, because again, that's, that's what we're focusing on tonight is, you know, that application that you sought administrative approval on. No, there's a microphone right in the lower table, and there is a button probably on the back of it. There you go.
The driveway is here, trucks would come around, they would utilize the new existing bays, they currently do the same thing for the existing bays back there. Some, some minor modifications here so they can complete their three-point turn and some, obviously some, some site work to redo the existing topography so the trucks can get down and get, you know, to the bay. So that's it. It's a pretty straightforward administrative application.
Yep. And again, I know you presented that, presented to the commission for administrative approval. I was, I'm not sure if other commission members commented, but I was the one that requested it be placed on the agenda, simply because I think, as you're aware, that there are several zoning violations, you know, on the, you know, on the property right now as far as storage, and I'm not sure if there's other issues. So that was the reason why I requested it to be placed on the agenda, because at some point, I think it's somewhat difficult for commissions to approve applications for an applicant on a property where there's a zoning violation. So if you would please just address the zoning violations.
Sure. And I wanted to, to give you for the record, copies of some correspondence from November 2013, just prior to our client purchasing the property, and from April of this year, when our client refinanced the property, that the lenders typically ask that we get zoning compliance letters from the town, and we did, we did get those letters.
We have six copies, I tell you, yeah, I was going to say if you would give one to Mrs. Hand.
I submit then, to, just to go to the issue of good faith here, we're, you know, we're in April, we got a zoning compliance letter, we want to do this work, we come in, and at the same time, we were talking about and still are doing some, some work to maybe internally reorganize the site, to make it more sightly, if you will, a little more efficiently operating with some of the existing uses on site, many of which are non-conforming, the site is non-conforming on setbacks and landscaping. So we came in to discuss that, we mentioned, you know, we have Toyota of Wallingford there. I think, when I say we, I mean my client, I just got involved about a month, about two weeks ago. Toyota of Wallingford's there, they park excess vehicles when they're delivered to town, they can't fit them on the site, they park them there. She pointed out that, you know, that requires a special permit, technically, notwithstanding the letter, because I'm sure they're acting in good faith, they didn't know that those were Toyota of Wallingford vehicles. That may be, you know, one of the quote unquote zoning violations that, that, you know, you became aware of. What we want to say to that is, we are prepared to rectify that situation. We will file before your next meeting a special permit application to deal with Toyota of Wallingford. On its face, I think that issue is as simple as the three loading bays in the back. You need an application, we need the special permit, and we're prepared to do it. You know, it's unlike, you know, most auto dealership applications where you've got service bays and cars on the street and all of that. This is just a kind of a temporary storage area, sometimes there's 40 cars there, other there, other times there's no cars there. It's fenced in, it's separated, it's segregated. That area has been, has had cars parked on it for 50 years. They, it's paved to the road, you know, in the day, in the heyday, there were hundreds of cars in that area in white, in the north, northern section of, of this site, hundreds of cars, they were coming in with three different shifts probably, in and out of that site. So Toyota of Wallingford issue is an easy issue. At the same time, we discussed, it's been a number of meetings with economic development, with the zoning office, I was there most recently, a week ago today, with our engineer, discussing whether or not there were things that could be offered by the owner to kind of help improve the visual aspects in some of the non-conforming areas, and we're prepared to propose new landscaping. This area is basically fence and no green. This portion of the site has a fair amount of greenage on its buffer and perimeter. This is paved with a fence and not very sightly. The back of these buildings across the street are not very sightly either, but as Casey said the other day, we want to try to make things better, and we think we can do it, we're prepared to increase planting, about a 10-foot strip, repair the fence, put slats in it to.
Well, again, I appreciate everything that you'd like to do, but I, you know, at this point, I'd really like to focus just on this application.
Okay.
I understand you, you realize that there's some zoning violations there, one is with Toyota, but I also think there's some truck stores that's also in violation. I appreciate the fact that, you know, you're looking forward to, or proposing that you're going to come forward, you know, with some plans to, you know, work toward, you know, compliance with our, you know, with our zoning regulations. You know, I appreciate that. Candidly, I look at the application that's before us right now, is rather minor, I'm not sure if other commission members look at it that way. My issue, you know, my issue is to, if this is, what you're looking for today is to be approved, that we do have some specific deadlines in place when, whether it's an application is brought before us, and when that application is completed and the site is brought into compliance. That's what, that's what my concern is, because, and don't take this in a negative way, and I'm not really directed toward you, but we've seen other times where we've had applicants that have come before us and said they would do various things, and sometimes they don't get done, and then we have our zoning enforcement officer out there, or a town planner out there trying to get compliance. So that's my main issue here. Again, from my perspective, what you're proposing in this application, I don't have an issue with, I think it's very minor. I just think it's important that we have some very hard deadlines set for, you know, a plan to bring it into compliance, as well as to see then that plan is brought to fruition. That's, those are my issues. Other commission members may have other issues, but that's where I am on this.
And I think that's where we are, you know? I've been engaged to follow through on the plan, started that last week. Certainly there's some, some desire to get the current application approved, and it sounds like you're sensitive to that fact, but we're, we're engaged to try to work through this process, get an application filed if we can before next month, and move forward to getting some of those issues resolved. It's a little bit of a tricky site because of its history and the existing non-conformities, but I think we can get it done, and I think we've got some direction, and I think we've, we're trying to give you an idea of what it may look like, but in either respect, we're prepared to come back and start working through the, that portion of this site with you immediately.
Good, I appreciate that. Commission members with any questions for the applicant? Mrs. Hand, do you have any questions that you'd like to, or any comments that you'd like to make?
Yes. The only, I mean, I tend to agree with you that I think the actual widening of the driveway is not, not any major impact. The one thing I would say in regard to that is, and actually, they have a net, pretty much a net zero in terms of impervious surface, because they're ripping up pretty much as much as they're putting down. So in regard to that, you do have a comment from the Water and Sewer Division about the depth of some of the piping that goes under there, so I would recommend that as a condition of approval. And this also didn't get reviewed by the engineering department, so I would also recommend a condition that there be review and sign off by the engineering department. In terms of the violations, the, the only, I guess, thing that I want to make clear, so, so in terms of the compliance letters, we don't do zoning compliance letters for this reason, because we can never guarantee zoning compliance, we're not all knowing. The 2013 one, I wasn't aware of any zoning violations at the time. The more recent one, I was aware of the Toyota issue, I didn't become aware of the truck issue until the meeting with the property owner that we had in May, but we did have a meeting in April where the Toyota issue was discussed. So that was something that I had not been pursuing as a violation until such time as a, some sort of something moved forward with the property. So I guess that's my, my lesson learned, but that's why there wasn't an open zoning violation on the property at the time, just to clarify. The, in terms of moving forward, which I think we all would very much like to do, the, the only, Mr. Chairman, you sort of alluded to timing, and I think that's important. So the, the things that I, I don't think we need to get into the, or want to get into the weeds, or it's appropriate to get into the weeds about design or things like that, but I do think it's important that whatever proposal does come before the commission is a compliant and appropriate proposal, because I've, I have some concerns about the proposal as proposed, but I think that will come up in conversation with a future application. In terms of the truck, the truck storage on site, that I believe requires a, so I guess I would want to know from the property owner and from the applicant, and I do appreciate everything you, I mean, they've met with me many times and talked to me about what they plan to do, and I think, like I said, I think we all want to move forward. So I just want to know what the plan is for that part, because the, the car dealership, special permit, we hash out the details, that's pretty straightforward. The truck storage, I think, is a little less clear, so just in terms of figuring out what is the timing, and so if you plan on, if you plan on applying for a variance, if the variance gets denied, what does compliance mean? Compliance means the truck's gone. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page about that, kind of, and, and kind of what, make sure we all know what the plan is.
Still kind of working through that portion of the plan and trying to understand the tenant operations and some of its site use desires. There's, there's many tractor trailers on that site. You know, the manufacturing and the industrial uses there, for many years have required trucks. Many of the existing tenants have warehouse and storage, some of the trucks in that area are related to the existing uses.
But those are not the ones in question.
There are, there are a number of trucks in question for an existing tenant who presently does not have a distribution center on the site, but our client is in discussion with them about utilizing some of the area that is part of the pre-existing use to, to coincide with their trucking operations. So we're trying to kind of analyze that issue and deal with those trucks. I think there's an argument to be made that that can, that can happen by taking advantage of what's been an ongoing usage, so long as there's sufficient parking to satisfy that use and all the other uses. One of the things that we were asked to do, and we haven't done yet, is put together a complete parking table showing required parking, existing parking.
That would all be part of an application that you would be presented to us. I think from the commission's standpoint, what we would expect and certainly anticipate and expect, when you do bring an application before
of what's been an ongoing usage so long as there's sufficient parking to satisfy that use and all the other uses. One of the things that we were asked to do and we haven't done yet is put together a complete parking table showing required parking, existing parking.
That would all be part of an application that you would be presented to us. I think from the commission's standpoint, what we would expect and certainly anticipate and expect, when you do bring an application before us, that it's compliant with our zoning regulations and certainly in consultation with Mrs. Hand, I'm sure she'll be able to give you some, you know, some, some very good guidance and direction on that.
So I guess the direct answer is I'm not exactly sure yet, but we're kind of working on that.
Yeah. But I think the answer is hopefully that when you bring something before, it'll be a plan that'll be compliant with zoning, however you go about getting that to be compliant with zoning. I think that's fair to say.
That's the goal.
Good. Now, Mrs. Hand, is it, would we be able, if we chose to, to put a time limit on this to, you know, indicate that, you know, as far as, because in fairness to them, we do have a zoning violation, they're looking to address it, but to put sometimes a time limit on it to say that the site should be brought in compliance, you know, by the end of this year? Is that something that?
I think they could make a good faith agreement to that as a condition. And then if it's not, if, if we haven't achieved compliance by the agreed upon time, then your direction to, then I would take it that right now, your direction to me is that at that time, we take an aggressive enforcement process. So we, we take an, like, we're, we're gonna.
I would say, at least, at least in my opinion, that would be an option.
Yeah.
You know, depending on where the whole plan is and where the process is. If it's a matter of, I wouldn't want to, don't want to get into.
We're almost there.
Yes. But just that we're not, and I'm not suggesting that you would do this, just that not, it's, it's just, you know, going on. Because again, it's not directed at you, but we've seen in some cases where, you know, we're attempting to work with an applicant and it's taken much longer in order to have something brought into compliance. So I would just leave that. Again, commission members, any comments? Unless the applicant has any final comments?
I think that's fair. I appreciate it.
Any, any member from the audience that would like to give their comments? Seeing none, I guess I'd bring it back to the commission for a motion on the, on the application.
So just so I'm clear, we're aiming for the end of the year.
Uh, that would be my intention, yes. I don't know if other commission members agree with that or not.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I was just gonna say, I appreciate the applicant coming in and, and the comments. I, I, I'd like to give him a little more time because I'm, it takes me a little time, you know, sometimes the work takes a little longer. Considering it's already July, I'd be willing to, you know, next thing you know, it's gonna be not as hot as this. And the, I'm not sure of, other than the, the information that was shared by the applicant, if it might be better to give them a little more time, but the idea would be we need a good faith effort. So I, I don't disagree with this particular request. This request makes perfect sense, you know, and I candidly, living in town this long, it's great to see something happening at this site. So I, but I understand if I heard correctly, new owner in the last, within five to 10 years. So I get it. There's, you know, I'm thinking of just a couple of months ago, we had Walmart in and they had a bunch of compliance issues. So anything we can do to allow them, at least they're here before us, I, I get it. So I'd be in favor of a little longer than the end of the year. I'm thinking maybe, you know, maybe next spring, you know, not knowing what's gonna happen with the winter, give them a little more time. But the idea would be come in and do what you can to, to work with the staff, you know, because I, I think there's some documentation. So I'm in favor of this application and the idea that they make a good faith effort. I think my only proposal to you, Mr. Chairman, would be maybe give them a little more time than the end of the year, just because it's already tentatively mid-July. That's just my own thought.
I appreciate that. I guess my response to that is I would certainly, I understand it may take time to have work done, but as far as having a plan, because again, I think as was indicated in some of the notes from Mrs. Hand, I, I think as far as some of the violations, they've been known well before just the spring. I think there's probably been several conversations that Mrs. Hand, maybe not with the property owner, but I know with Toyota as far as storage of cars. So, you know, it's, it's not something that just has been, if you would, sprung on the owner that, wait a minute, you have some zoning violations here. So I, I guess I would like to see at least a, a plan approved. Now, whether it's not everything is completed, but, you know, a plan before us that we can act on. And I wouldn't want to see that go out until, until the spring. So.
The, sorry to interrupt, but the, this application, at least one of them will be a special permit and the other one may be a very, I mean, depending on what it is. But the, so with at least the special permit, there can be, I mean, that you can put any time limit you want on it. So that one you will, so if that's approved, I mean, if we go through the process, they apply in the next couple of months, we go through the review process, it's towards the end of the year, then depending on where we are, you can at that point look at like a limitation for getting the work actually done, if that would help.
So if we were to say that we have a, a special permit to be approved, an application to us and a special, a special permit approved by the end of this year?
Yeah. I mean, I think if they're, if they're, if they're willing to.
I suspect that would give them additional time. And then as far as Mr. Fitzsimmons' comment, as far as the, having all of the work completed by the, the spring, is that?
Yeah.
By April 30th?
I think.
Is that, and that's something, again, we can place in a motion, is that correct?
Well, the, yeah, and I mean, I would say, I think it's agreed to that they're gonna pursue compliance between now and the end of the year. And then with the special permit, we'll tie in the timing of completing the work.
Okay. All right. Any final comments from anyone? Seeing none, at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion.
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 219-19, site plan for Reno Properties to widen the rear driveway to allow better truck access to loading doors at 718 North Colony Road as shown on plans entitled Proposed Loading Docks Prepared for Reno Properties 718 North Colony Road, wanting for Connecticut dated April 16, 2019, revised to May 28, 2019, subject to S and E bond of $1,000. Comments to the, of the Wallingford Water and Sewer Division Senior Engineer dated July 5, 2019, review and approval by the Wallingford Engineering Department. Special permit to be approved by the end of 2019 and compliance variances by, by the end of the year. Right?
Well, do you want to just say they'll pursue compliance by the end of the year?
Pursue compliance by the end of the year.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Heine.
Yes to approve.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, the application's been approved. Gentlemen, have a good evening. I certainly encourage you that the sooner you can to continue discussions with Mrs. Hand, so hopefully we can bring this to a closure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Hand, if you would, please take us through the rest of the agenda.
Bond releases. Subaru is not ready to be released. 1163 South Broad, I'm recommending reduction to $300. There was a dead tree, so the tree has to get replaced.
I make a motion. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reduce the bond for application 225-17 to $300,000 for site plan.
Just 300.
Just what I said.
I thought you said 300,000.
Yeah, thousand.
Did I? I'm thinking different numbers. 300 hours.
You're taking lessons from me.
M Zeta 1163 South Broad Street.
Do we have a?
Second.
Motion second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, moving on.
The next is an extension request for 88 Woodhouse Avenue. That was a housing opportunity district approval, so it was a mixed income housing, 30% affordable approved at 88 Woodhouse. That hasn't been constructed yet and their approval expires in November of this year. So they're seeking an extension. They can, you can grant them up to five years of extension. Typically, we do it in one-year chunks. I would probably recommend in this case you do like two. So that would be to November 10th of 2021.
Just before I ask for a motion, have you had any discussions with the applicant as far as just their, you know, their intentions, as far as a timetable that they may or may not have?
I, as far, I believe the property may be on the market, so I have had some inquiries.
Okay, that's fine. All right. At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion for the extension.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend application 237-14, site plan, the Hearn 88 Woodhouse Ave, for two years to expire November 10th, 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, moving on.
Okay. Legal notice for last month's meeting, both variance applications were approved. They were pretty straightforward, vertical additions. And for this coming month, there are a few of note. Item number one is for North Colony Road. It's the property that contains Wendy's and two other buildings on it. It's a proposal, this proposal would basically enable the property to be split into two pieces. So one building would still have, or one property would still have Wendy's on it. The other property would have the other two buildings on it. You will be, if this moves forward, be seeing an application for the development of the property with the other two buildings on it. And so there, the one issue is that right now, the lot is compliant with the overall open space requirement, but the way the line would get drawn, one lot would have extra open space and the other lot would be short on open space. So what we're recommending as a condition of approval for the variance is that it's the Wendy's lot, I believe, that's the one that would be short on open space. So if the property were ever redeveloped, then it would be brought into compliance. But for the time being, it would be allowed to stand as is, basically.
Is the intention on this for perhaps a parking lot?
It is, associated with a dealer and repairers license, I believe. Then second one is Protronics up on Parker Street, right next to the, the tracks there. They're looking to do an addition onto the property. It's a very tight site, especially in terms of getting trucks in and out. So they, that if approved, eventually will also end up in front of you. The, the big thing there has been looking to make sure that loading is not going to further future occur from the road. So like trucks aren't backing in because Parker Street's a tough, a tough street. So to be backing onto or off of. And then number five is the Parker Place condominiums. It's, the variance itself is, I don't think, very significant, but that property has frontage on three sides because it's a whole block and the other side is the tracks. So on the northern side, and the name of that side street is escaping me right now, but on the northern side is where their dumpster is located. So on the northern side, near the tracks, is where their dumpster is located. They actually are looking to do a trash compactor there instead because of the amount of trash that will be generated. So they need a little bit of a front yard landscaping variance in order to put, to fit the compactor, basically. It's, the dumpsters are very nicely screened, they're going to screen the compactor. It's really tucked, there, there's not, there aren't a lot of good options for where they could put it. So it really is kind of tucked away. I don't have a big concern about it. And like I said, they do have frontage on three sides, so it is kind of tough there. And I guess the last one I'll point out is number six, 12 to 16 Northfield Road. That is a house in a commercial zone right across from True Blue. It's right before the bridge on Northfield. It's like a little red house. They're looking to take that, to basically rebuild it and rebuild an improved version of it. But they are looking to, we're, we're trying to see if there's kind of another way to, to make that work a little bit better and a little more compliant, but that's the intention of that. So any other questions?
Anyone questions for CBA?
Okay. And then the zoning violation log, so a couple of things, couple of updates for Mr. Cohen. I, the, so, and, and sort of a general comment for the commission, we had a problem with closing out some of the violations. So I closed a couple out and they disappeared. We have to rewrite the part of the, the macro in the software. So we didn't close out the Walmart, the Walmart violation yet, but it's not because I forgot, it's because I didn't want to lose it. So we have a note to do that, so that'll disappear or that'll end in the, end up in the closed log next month. And there were two other ones, oh, which she, it looks like she did fix them. So the OSPRDs, they were old remnants of old court cases that had never been closed out, so we closed some of those out. And then in regard to the cemetery question, I did speak to Mr. Baltramidis about that and I issued him a, I just sent a letter, I put it together on Friday, so it just went out today, summarizing kind of the issues. We, we had some internal meetings about it and, and we've talked about kind of where it needs to go from here. They asked me to put a letter together. So, and he knows because he was part of those meetings previously. So there is a letter that documents kind of what the, really the issue primarily is that driveway, but it's related to some other things and it causes some other things. So he has some ideas for how to address that. So that has been documented. It, it may end up, I, I don't know this, but it may end up coming back before you guys if there are any modifications. Otherwise, it's a matter of field correction. So more, more to be revealed on that, but it is moving forward and, and there is an understanding that there is a priority there.
Sure. Mr. Cohen?
Thank you very much for that. Much appreciated. And if it comes back before us, that, that's fine. I guess the one outstanding question was, you know, that driveway kind of covers part of the cemetery and if, you know, we wanted to have the state archaeologist come in and take a look, what's underground? You know, I'm still willing to, you know, contact that person if I need to, you know, write a letter to do that. So.
Yeah.
But, but thanks, thanks for this.
Okay. I mean, and I think if, if you or anyone wanted to take that, because it has to come from the council, so from the town council. So if someone wanted that to happen, because I think it was a couple of years ago now, we talked to the state archaeologist about it. So we, somebody would have to take it to the town council and make that request and then they have to request it to the state archaeologist.
And, and I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. So if that's.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Anyone else? I see if there's, in addition, that you would like to have added to our, our agenda, it's for 12 North Colony Road Properties LLC.
Oh, yes. Thank you for reminding me.
I guess I'd like to entertain a motion to add this to our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to our agenda tonight, Old North Colony Properties LLC.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And Mrs. Hand, if you would please give us a brief overview of what this item is, please.
Sure. So these are the two properties on South Broad Street and what's known as Old North Colony Road, which loops around behind the Buick dealership, sort of right on the corner of South Broad. And they are both approved for different sort of stockpiling and fill permits. They were approved under various. sort of stockpiling and fill permits. Um, they were approved under various iterations with the idea that there was going to be a development on the property several years ago. Um, obviously, the development hasn't happened. Um, so the front property has our um, the type of stockpiling permit that's ongoing. The rear property doesn't. And um, so they have to get an extension every year. And um, this year, I only recommended a three-month approval because I thought that there might be some issues at the site, and I wanted a chance to kind of get out there and actually do a site walk with them. Um, I went out there with our environmental planner. There were a lot of issues out there. Well, there was just a lot of material there, and it was in places it wasn't supposed to be. Um, so they, I will say, have done a fabulous job of cleaning up. I I was out there today, of cleaning things up and reining everything into where it's supposed to be. Um, there's one part of this site, the site that is the subject of this, which is the twelve Old North Colony Road. Um, there's one portion where they're still bringing down some of the material, but it's a pretty dramatic improvement to what was there because there and there was also a wetlands breach. So they've been to wetlands. So they have been working hard. Um, I was I was pretty concerned when I was first out there, but they've done, they've, I was pretty impressed today when I was out there, too. Um, so what I'm recommending at this point is they're they're requesting another three-month approval. They're going to be coming in to you guys, probably to modify their approval. So you can, we can hash out what might be permitted in the future or not. Um, but in the meantime, they are looking to um, finalize what's left for them to be brought into compliance and for them to deal with their wetlands issues. So they're planning to have both of us out by the end of July and be fully compliant at that point. So I am comfortable recommending another three-month extension, and then we'd revisit it at that point if they, if there are any issues left.
Good. Thank you. Anyone in with questions?
So it's I'm sorry, it would just be to October ninth?
It would be, yes.
According.
Yeah.
At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion on the extension.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend uh, special permit number four one five dash oh eight to a three-month extension to October ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Is that the right number?
Oh, for uh, Old County, uh, Old North Colony Properties LLC.
And that's a special permit number four oh four.
Did I ever say the wrong one?
The special permit, uh, Mrs. Hand?
Is it?
Just clarify the uh, special permit. On the on the top, we have special permit number four zero four dash zero nine. And then farther on, we have another special permit number. So if you could please just clarify which one we're extending, please.
Four zero four dash zero nine.
Okay, I stand corrected. Uh, make a motion to approve special permit four oh four dash oh nine to a three-month extension to October ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cohen, all uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the abstentions. And at this point in time, I believe we were at the end of our agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn our July planning and zoning meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, we're adjourned. Have a good evening. Thank you, gentlemen.